All right, let's call this, uh, let's call this Board of Supervisors meeting to order October 4th, 2021. Mike Word?
Sir.
Give us your best one you got on Monday morning, the 4th.
On the 4th of October, huh? That's great, y'all. Lord, we come to you this morning and, uh, and it just seems like we just jump into you with the hustle and bustle of things that go on. Uh, Lord, we just want to take just a moment just to, uh, just to say thank, uh, for all that you do for us and all that you do for this county. Father, we, uh, we just pray this morning that you can give these men the wisdom to, uh, Lord, just to run this county, uh, the way it's supposed to be run. So many times, uh, Lord, this country is, is just, Lord, we need you, we need you to, uh, Lord, just to get a grip on us. Uh, right is wrong, the wrong is right. Uh, Lord, we don't know, I don't think we know where we're going in this country. I just pray that you would just start it right here, uh, in Rankin County with these men in front of us today. Lord, that we could, uh, we could get our feet back on, on the ground. Lord, we need, we pray a special blessing over this. Start with us. Start with us now. Father, we love you. Thank you most of all for sending your son, Jesus, to hang on that tree. If one day we'll be able to sit at the right feet of God. We love you. We thank you for all that you're doing and all that you're about to do. In Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
Man, thanks, Word. All right, item number three on our agenda is public comments with Mr. Brandon Cobb. Mosquito update for September. How are you doing?
I'm doing pretty good if we make it through this year.
Think you're gonna make it? You know, downhill slide, it looks like.
We are. Uh, relatively speaking, this has been a mild, uh, mosquito season. We've had some ups and downs, but...
Did they catch COVID also?
No, they do not. It might help our job if they caught it and wouldn't spread it, but they're, they're bad about spreading the disease, so we don't want them getting it. Um, no, September went by pretty easy. We didn't have any major problems, major complaints. Uh, couple of pockets where they got a little high, but we went in and sprayed and it came back down. Everything was looking real good. We're looking to just kind of slide right into fall and not have too many problems. We're past the peak, uh, time of West Nile season. Not saying we're not gonna have any more problems with it, but we're past the main, it's usually from about the last week of June to the mid-September, so we've made, we've made it past the hotspots. And, uh, hopefully we're just not gonna have any problems. We have not had any human cases reported. And we haven't had any come out of our traps either, West Nile, this year, so it's been a blessed year. And so...
So our cold winter might have helped a little bit?
Yes, and I'm praying for another one starting next week. Uh, everybody complained about 2020, 2021 has been twice as worse, so, uh, but fortunately Rankin County has never been really difficult. Uh, we've gone in, done our jobs, uh, and we have not had any major problems in the seven years we've been working with y'all. We appreciate that. So, uh, y'all make it easier to get up and coming to work in the morning. Uh, we have a lot of good drainage throughout the county and, uh, good contact with y'all, good, uh, communication. So, most of the time, we don't have any problems. We just get a call every once in a while. Uh, we go out, of course. Apparently, from what Mike said, uh, to me before the meeting, he's got all the mosquitoes in Rankin County at his house, so...
Good, he needs them.
Well, I didn't know he could pray like that. I thought we'd go start a tent revival.
He can, he can. That's the only time we don't put him on a word count. That's the only time, so... All right, thank you, Mr. Cobb. I think we're good. Jay, you have anything? Brad?
I'm good.
All right.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, bud. All right, item B, Mr. Guy Warren and his partner in crime. Risk management partners.
Because in the time of keeping, not keeping y'all tied up all day, we do have y'all a complete package, and y'all can look over there, and if you have any questions about it, just give us a call. We'll come back out, so we can talk over the phone, answer any question. You have this, it's an overview that pretty much is gonna tell everything that we need to, need to talk about. I think I gave you two.
All right. They gave me three.
Yeah, I'll hand this to you.
Can we put this in their spot?
You can, if you will. It'd be great. All right, and we'll just go over this real briefly and stop me if you have any questions at all. The first part is the property and equipment insurance. This is written through Insurance Associate Stephen Wallace. Now, one thing we did this year, which we do it every year, but we really got them up. Now, when these guys turned in the, um, bids, they turned in like two or three other quotes through other companies. We did not have any more interest from outside agents quoting it. That's why we really put the pressure on the incumbents to provide us other quotes instead of just the renewal. And by far, you're with the best company out there. All of the companies are the same. All of the agents are the same. Again, Stephen Wallace Insurance Associates through One Beacon is on the property and the equipment insurance, and Paul puts some notes right here under it, like the property values are slightly higher than last year. The rates went up, but very minimal. The combined loss ratio on this is 27.4%, which is good, and that's why the rates didn't go up, you know, because property is extremely high to write now more than ever. And then we do not currently have the terrorism, and we hadn't bought it in the past, but we wanted to present that and show you what the price would be. All right, the next part is the auto, um, auto insurance, and that's through, when Dean Kirby had it, Wellington has it, and this is all the commercial auto for Rankin County. And I was gonna point out in your books that we give you, if you'll flip through just at your time, I'm gonna just go over this with you where you'll see, as I know y'all heard by, you know, from the county dump trucks to the police cars to your own personal cars, auto is extremely hard to write. So for them to keep the rate the way they have is outstanding. Like our neck, well, to be honest with you, I said everybody provided another quote. We did not even get a quote because the incumbent provided them with a renewal rate, and they were like, "We cannot touch it. There's no need us even quoting it." They were gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars more. So for FCCI to stay on that like they did was outstanding. But one of the things I was gonna point out, just to let you see, down here that it, what it talks about, last year was $1,045 per vehicle. It went to $1,190 per vehicle. But the, the claims on this, if you average out the last, all of the, uh, six-year combined loss ratio is 82%, which is not that good. And that's whether that's the road crew or the police or whatever, you know, you're in a high risk. So to be able to keep your, I guarantee you, everybody here is paying more than that on their personal lines.
It was probably the sheriff's department.
No, no. All right, the next part is the general liability insurance, and again, this is, um, One Beacon through Insurance Associate Stephen Wallace. The ratings based on, you know, um, were up eight, a little over $8 million, and that's how they come up with the rates on, on all this, is what the expenditures are. Um, but technically, if you can see here, the next part is the rates are up like 3.4 basic points, so that is nothing. And then the next part is the volunteer fire department, and this is with a program, and it's through Billy Horn, and he's with AIG Wellington. And this is absolutely unbelievable, the pricing on this, and, um, and, and they did not go up to speak of. If you'll look down here, um, the equipment rates was 4.038, and this year they're 4.4131. So even though the, um, the count is the same, the, uh, the pricing is very competitive. And if y'all got any questions on anything, this is the total, and this is who we recommend, and, and the only thing that we did not get an optional quote on was the volunteer fire, because there's no one out there that could compete with that. And then the auto, no one would provide us a quote with that due to the pricing being so competitive.
All right. Good, Brad?
I'm good.
And if y'all have any questions, like I say, just give us a call. We'll be glad to come back out or whatever. We did meet with Juan and Mr. Keith last week to go over this, and I think they got their arms wrapped around it pretty well as well.
Appreciate y'all.
All right. Great, thanks, Guy. All right, item number four, old business. Board wishes to entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
So motion by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Item four passes. Item five on the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
So motion approved by Mr. Bishop?
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item six, Ms. Caroline Gilbert. Good morning.
Good morning, y'all.
How are you?
Morning.
Good. All right, mine is easy. It's my end of year required reporting, um, and I just need you guys to take a look at these and approve. Um, delinquent taxpayers, the real property sold to state in the amount of $3,377,466.95. Delinquent mobile homes, $45,114.59. Personal property, $401,626.40. And then we have to report checks returned from insufficient funds in the amount of $11,988.88. And then there is a listing of surrender tags, um, that we have to report also.
All right. So motion approved by Mr. Bishop?
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item six passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline.
Ms. Caroline. Item seven, Mr. Sullivan. Good morning.
Good morning, John.
What happened to y'all's colleagues?
We're socialists. It's a Monday.
I know, I know. Uh, I'd have made petitions to change the assessment on 2000, 2001 real property assessment rule.
Motion.
All right, so motion by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item A passes. Item B?
Uh, petition to adjust the exemption on the 2021 home state exemption supplement rule.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Bishop?
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Item B passes. Item C?
Item C, request authority enter into an agreement with Tri-State Consulting amount of $12,000. Department of Revenue is making us update land use codes, and it's in my fiscal year '22 budget.
Motion.
All right, so motion by Mr. Bishop?
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item C passes. Thank you, so... Doesn't it sound weird how Mr. Bishop and Mr. Calhoun always first and second, everything? It's weird today, isn't it? Nobody else can get a word in edgewise with you two, you know? All right.
I can't wait till we start adding things to the agenda.
No doubt about it. Item eight, Mr. Harrison. Good morning.
Morning. Roadwork conference for September and roadwork scheduled for October.
Motion to approve.
All right, again, Mr. Bishop?
Don't argue over it.
So again, a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. So item A passes. Item B?
Uh, request AT and T permit for fiber optic on County Line Road to be installed between Clark Road and Wildcat Creek.
I want this one. Motion approved.
All right, so motion by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. So item C, Mr. Harrison?
Request approval for TEC of Jackson Utilities to construct fiber along, uh, shallow road between Highway 43 and Tyler Road, in the road's list.
Motion approved.
So motion to approve, Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item C passes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Yes, sir.
Move to item number nine, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Morning. First item we have is the, uh, preliminary plat for the reserve at Bible Farms Phase 1. That's a District 3 development. We recommend an approval of that preliminary plat.
Making motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Calhoun?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. So item A passes. Item B, Mr. Parker?
Item B, Mr. President, we recommend an approval of payout number one for work performed on Andrew Chapel Road reconstruction. We reviewed the request against our records and recommend payment to Site Masters, Inc. in the amount of $289,199.05, and authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
All right, so motion by Mr. Bishop to approve?
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion?
Is this the company that has the contract? I'm doing it all?
Site Master, yeah, that's just doing the intercheck.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item B passes. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Slate?
Yes, sir.
Under item 10 for public hearings, walk us through.
Under my section, gentlemen, first item, item A, is a public hearing on the Yanni and Amy Diaz conditional use permit at 451 East Petros Road. This is a District 1, uh, property. We will open that public hearing. Yanni and Amy Diaz are seeking a conditional use permit to operate a sawmill to cut wo- wood for their pallet business. This will be at 451 East Petros Road. It's a family-owned business. Only family, family members will be working on the property. Their log trucks will bring the logs for processing, and then the trucks will pick up and deliver the wood to their pallet business in Jackson. Um, it's called YNA Pallet Sales, Inc. That's the business. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We plan to add an additional 40 by 70 pole barn in the future that will, uh, cover or house some additional machinery. It's a 34.98 acre parcel. They also own an adjoining 31.98 acre parcel. Both parcels will be zoned, are zoned RE1A, so the property was posted, and notice of the hearing was published in the newspaper. We've received one call in opposition, uh, because they did not want a business operating on this property. Uh, so that public hearing is open. I will ask the Diazs to step forward. I will also ask for, first, for anyone who is here to speak in opposition to the Yanni and Amy Diaz conditional use permit request, to please step forward. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? All right, please come forward. Now, before you address the board with, uh, with your comments, please provide your name and address.
Hey, good morning.
My name's John Thomas. My address is 477 East Petros.
Okay.
Pearl 39208.
Good, good morning.
He doesn't hear well.
Me either.
I'm sorry, I can't hear this. My wife...
Amy Thomas.
Amy Thomas, and she's gonna help me out, one of the neighbors.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Arnold. I live at 457 East Petros Road, and I would be right beside of this business.
Okay.
And, um, we bought our properties understanding that this was not a resident, this was a residential area. This was not a commercial.
Okay.
And we just really didn't want the extra irritation of added traffic. My kids get on the bus in the morning. That would have kind of effect with deliveries and whatever, the kind of effect that we're right there. The buses turn right around in their driveway.
Okay, thank you.
Are y'all close, also close to the property?
Yes, we are. We're at the dead end. She is next one up, right by where the pallet company is. This is a dead end road.
Okay.
Uh, I have a petition here of 43, uh, people who live on this road.
Okay.
And who all have the same concerns. Uh, we have talked to them, and the problem being is that this is about a two and a half, uh, well, I'm sorry, about a two-mile-long road, and most of the people on this road are people who have been there for a long time.
True.
I personally have been there over 40 years.
Yes, sir.
And when I purchased the house, it was, I mean, I'm sorry, not the house, the land. I built my own house. Uh, it was because I was looking for a place that was quiet. I'm 100% disabled veteran, and, uh, at age 23, I was looking for me a place that was secluded, and so I purchased this land at the very end, uh, of this road with the idea that I would be able to live in a, uh, nice, quiet place that I chose to live and raise my kids and my family, and that's the way they were raised. Uh, you can get up in the morning, you can hear the ducks on my pond, you can hear the turkey gobbling in the woods sometimes. Uh, you can even hear my fish jumping up and out of the water waving at me saying, "Come feed me, I'm hungry." You know, it's, it's beautiful, it's gorgeous. The other people who have signed this petition feel the same way, and these people had already put this equipment on that property without permission before, and it made a lot of people's life miserable. That's why I have so many signatures off the one road, and, uh...
Is that the only business on this road? I mean, everything is residential.
Everything is residential through the two-mile-long road. It is all residential.
We're kinda at a disadvantage today because your supervisor's not here, so we don't really know the area like he would, but you're doing a great job, though.
Yeah, all right, so th- thank you for your comments. Thank you for your service on the same side of that. So, uh, anything else y'all have? Y'all good? Okay.
We're good.
Thank, thank you for speaking.
Thank y'all for coming.
Yep.
We have the original of the petition. I'm gonna receive that with board's permission. I'm gonna receive this into the record for the hearing.
Right.
Uh, that way it'll be a copy of the minutes, and, and we'll form a basis or a part of the board's decision in any debate. I'm gonna hand this to Ms. Jessica, who is our keeper of our minutes and documentation. If y'all excuse me, let me, I wanna address the board. Are the Diazs present, Ms. Janice?
This is all that we see. I asked, there was no one there.
Just wait.
So, uh, we've, we've called the applicant or the proponent, uh, of the request for conditional use. Let me walk you guys through, um, a couple of considerations here. Whenever you are, uh, whenever you're being confronted with a request for conditional use, there, there is a, a method, uh, that we address those requests, and so I'm gonna walk you through what that looks like. Any person that desires a conditional use submits a written application, uh, which has been done. They indicate, um, the, the section of the ordinance under which they are requesting the conditional use, they've done that, and they state the grounds, uh, of the request, which, uh, the application appears to contain grounds for the request. Once you've received that application, we go through our process. That's how we got here today. You're now engaged in a public hearing. What you guys consider, anytime you get a request for conditional use, there's a number of factors that you look at. I'm gonna skip down to item number G under our list of factors. General compatibility with adjacent properties and other property in the district. And so that appears to me to be the issue that's been raised by the petitioners. It's that this particular proposed use, which would be a conditional use, is not compatible with the other uses that are existing in the district. Um, I'm not aware of any other business or commercial uses in this area. The information that you have received, I'm, I'm gonna look at Renee, do you know of any other businesses or commercial operations in this area? We don't have that information. If the proponent had been here, perhaps the proponent could have given additional information about other uses that may have helped to establish that their use would be compatible, but we don't have that information in front of us. And so because of that, I think for the purposes of your hearing, what you're left with is evidence that there are not compatible uses and no evidence that there are. And so my suggestion would be that the board would be on solid ground, uh, would be, it would be well-served to either reject the conditional use application or table this matter until there's a full board available to, to consider it. So those would be the two options that I see available to you.
All right, so public hearing is closed?
Yes, sir.
All right, so the public is in, public hearing closed. Board wishes to take action?
Yeah, I make a motion to deny the request.
So motion to deny the request by Mr. Bishop?
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. So item A has been denied. Item B, Mr. Slate?
Item B will be a public hearing, Mr. President, on the Alltel Corporation DBA Verizon Wireless Conditional Use Permit, 6399 Grants Ferry Roads, District 2 property. We'll open that public hearing. Alltel Corporation DBA Verizon is seeking a conditional use permit to construct 160-foot-tall wireless communication tower at 6399 Grants Ferry Roads. It's a 1.51 acre parcel. Uh, the property is currently zoned RE1. The tower will be located 105 feet off of Grants Ferry Road. Some existing hardwoods will remain in front of, in front and on the sides and rear to act as a visual buffer to help shield the site from view. Included in the application is a letter from Verizon stating that they will allow the county to place emergency equipment on the tower if necessary at no cost to Rankin County. Also included is a copy of the lease agreement with the tower removal language that we want to see. Uh, the property was posted. Notice of the hearing was published in the paper, and no calls have been received. Again, this is a conditional use request. The towers are granted as conditional use, uh, in these areas. Uh, the issues that the board is to address and has addressed are ingress egress, off-street parking, refuse, which does not apply, utilities, which obviously they know how to do that, screening and buffering, which has already been addressed in the application. Any kind of open space requirements, compatibility is always an issue in these circumstances. I'm not aware of any incompatibility issues, and we've received no, uh, comments or calls. I want to request, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the Alltel Corporation DBA Verizon Conditional Use Permit request? Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I see no one coming forward to speak on that matter. Couple of proposed condition, we need a, the receipt of a letter. Uh, we, we have received receipt of the letter allowing for the co-location. Um, and then we wanna make sure on the record that it's clear that if this tower is ever abandoned, Verizon or any successor of the owner of the tower, that, that the owner of the tower, uh, will cause the tower to be removed within 90 days after the tower is no longer in use by any telecommunications provider, uh, and is deemed to be abandoned under applicable law. We want that in the record.
Hey, Mr. Slate, I thought you also, and you may have said this in your discussion right there, but if they had to remove the tower at their cost?
Yes, that's correct.
Not at the county's cost?
That's correct.
Okay.
So is there any reason for us to like, put any money up, up front to do that in case like they go defunct or something?
Yes, sir. We've, we've toyed with the idea of ha- having some sort of bond or some sort of collateral, Jay. Um, it's never gotten beyond just the discussion stage. It's not a part of our requirement. You could make it a condition, uh, if you choose to do so. This board has the discretion to make that a condition. Uh, the issue that I see is, I don't know how, I, I don't know whether there's a market for a bonding that responsibility. I don't know if you could, if you could acquire one. Um, so y'all tell me, we can make it a condition?
Well, I mean, we have had this happen once before, so I, I don't know. It would be a long-term process of probably 20 years it'll be there, so...
So how that would look strategically is a letter of credit. That's the better option, one that doesn't expire, unless and until we receive formal notification in writing that they don't intend to renew it. That's how we do our subdivision.
Well, it is Alltel Verizon, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I think they might go anywhere.
Maybe Verizon. But I think that is something to look at on the future side of this thing, is to put that bond up.
Don't be left.
Right. My only concern would be, um, that these are documents that would likely have a good bit of age on them, uh, at the point in time that you wanna trigger it. Uh, also, uh, what, what would the cost to remove a tower 20 years hence be? I have no idea. I, I have no idea how to set that, um, and whether or not we would, uh, set our letter of credit or collateral requirement at a point that would be meaningful on the front end and workable, would approximate what it would cost to take it down. I'm given to understand that those things are very expensive to take down. So it would not be a, it, it would be an expensive endeavor.
Well, I think, I think even right now, though, as long as you have the wording in there that they're responsible for it.
Yes.
I don't care what it costs, if they have to pay it to take it down. So I mean, I think that wording right there may cover the same thing for now, so...
It, it clarifies that there is a continuing obligation there that could be enforced in court.
Okay. All right, so the public hearing's closed?
Yes, sir.
So the board wishes to entertain a motion?
Yeah, I think most approve with the conditions that, uh, are termed safe.
Yep, so motion approved by Mr. Bishop?
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. So item B passes. Item C? sign. So item B passes. Item C, Mr. Slay?
Yes, sir. IMC is the public hearing on the Maryland Turnage Conditional Use Permit Request, 4085 Highway 471's District Two property. Maryland Turnage is seeking a conditional use permit to replace her existing manufactured home at 4085 Highway 471 with a 2021 28 by 56 home. It's a 5.89 acre parcel owned by her mom. Property is zoned RE1. Ms. Turnage is seeking the conditional use permit under the hardship section of our RE1 zoning capacity. She has a letter from her mother's doctor stating that assistance for the mom is needed. If the conditional use permit is approved, one acre will be divided out so that the home will be on a separate parcel from her mom's parcel. The property was posted. Notice of the hearing was published in the paper. We've received no calls in opposition on this matter. So at this time, I'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Maryland Turnage Conditional Use Permit to replace the existing manufactured home. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. At this time, we'll close that public hearing. I think it would be appropriate to take action. The only condition that we had and which is stated for you is that the acre would be separated out so that we don't end up with multiple dwellings on one parcel.
Could we do 1.2 acres?
Yes, sir. We can do whatever. It just says deed out a separate parcel here for this. Obviously, it needs to clear State Department of Health requirements for the septic and sewer. And so whatever that is, whatever, yes, whatever, whatever the State Department of Health says, the size of the acreage needed around the unit is, that's what needs to be separately described and needed out to you, okay?
It's usually a little more than eight.
Hey, and the only other thing I want to, just as a reminder, this is replacing an existing one there. That older one that's gone down, they're trying to make it better for. So it's.
Yes, sir.
They're taking the old one out.
Old one's coming out, new one's coming in. Or newer ones coming in.
Yes.
Yep. So, alright.
Alright, I'm, I'm making a motion to approve.
Alright, so the hearing's closed. So a motion by Mr. Calhoun to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, a like, a like sign. Excuse me, I'm getting choked up here. Item D.
Mr. President, item D is a public hearing on the Scott May rezoning request, Highway 43 North. It's a District Two property. We'll open that public hearing. Mr. May is seeking to rezone 34.42 acres on Highway 43 North. It's to go from A1 to RE1. He's proposing the development of a subdivision. It's called Grace Estates, 27 lots. The lots will range in size from one acre to 1.8 acres. Mr. May is proposing a minimum heated and cooled square footage of 2,200. The property's posted. Notice of the hearing has been published. We've received two calls in opposition due to wanting quiet country living and not a subdivision development. Alright, so that public hearing is open. And I'll ask, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the Scott May rezoning request?
Yes.
Alright, you need to come forward, please.
This is Highway 43.
Mm-hmm.
No, I'm sorry. I'm up here for Old Lake.
Okay.
This is Highway 43 North.
We have two Scott May matters. One is Highway 43 North, which I think is District Two. Did I say that? That's District Two? And it's called Grace Estates. Is anybody here to speak in opposition on that matter?
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President, I don't see any opposition on the first Scott May rezoning request, which is Grace Estates, Highway 43 North. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action.
Alright, so the board wishes to entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
A motion approved by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, a like sign. So item D passes. Item E, Mr. Slay?
Yes, sir. If I may, just quickly add one additional comment with respect to item D, which is the basis for our rezoning. As you know, there are two, there are two primary ways that rezoning is made effective, is available for action by the board. And that is, number one, that the original zoning was in error or, or that there is a change in the character and condition of the community to the effect that it justifies a rezoning and there is a public need for the rezoning. So on both of those counts, since there is no error in the original zoning application, because of that, Mr. May's request included information about the change in the character and the condition of the area in and around Highway 43, and it justifies a change from the ag zoning to the RE1 because there is a demonstrated need for residential development of this type in that area. And so on that basis, the board is making its decision. And so I just wanted to make sure and add that for the purposes of the record. As it relates to the next matter, Mr. President, if we're ready to move to item E, this will be the public hearing on the Scott May rezoning request, a 40-acre parcel. This is on Old Lake Road. The request would take the zoning from its current context, which is A1, to RE1. Mr. May is proposing a development of a subdivision called Old Lake Estates, which will contain 12 lots. The minimum proposed lot size is two acres. The, all of the lots will front on the public road and will meet the dimensional requirements of RE1 zone, which is, I believe, 100 feet. Thank you. There's a 10.78-acre lot that will remain at the back of the divided lots, but be a part of this subdivision development. It will be Lot 13, I believe. It's a 10.78-acre lot at the back of the property. But it will be, it will adjoin the 12 lots that are proposed, and it is being sold, I understand. Scott, you correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's being sold and adjoining property owner, if I recall correctly. Okay. Mr. May is proposing a minimum heated and cooled square footage of 2,000 square feet for each dwelling. Property was posted. Notice of the hearing was published in the newspaper. We've received two calls. One was in favor and one was in opposition. Of course, that's before today. So that public hearing is open. At this time, I will ask for anyone who is here to speak in opposition to the Scott May rezoning request to step forward. I'll need you to give your name and address before you address the board. Again, gentlemen, the criteria for any proposed rezoning are follows, number one, you can't develop a subdivision in ag zones in Rankin County. We don't allow it. And so in order for a subdivision development to be brought online on property that is currently zoned ag, it has to be rezoned, okay? And so we, that's the reason why Mr. May is here before us today with this request. In order to establish that rezoning is justified, there must be either a demonstration that there was a mistake in the original, in the original zoning classification, which we don't believe applies here, or secondarily, that there is, in fact, a change in the character and the condition of the area to justify the zoning, and there is a demonstrated public need for the property. In Mr. May's application, he asserts that there is, in fact, a change in the character and the condition of the, of the, of the general neighborhood and the vicinity such that a higher density, even though it's low density, a higher density than ag is justified. And then, number two, there's a demonstrated public need. And what we've been dealing with over the last several months or year or more is the need for additional residential development in and around areas like this. And so the staff is of the opinion that the need and the justification for the character has been met. But at this time, we'll ask if anyone in opposition come forward, name and address, please.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
Brad, Chris Lowery.
Hey, Chris.
We've talked, I don't think we had a chance to meet yet. I live at 1540 Old Lake Road. My property touches the back section where Mr. May has purchased the 40 acres.
Now, the back section, are you talking about the 10 that is not gonna be developed?
Right. I own, yeah, exactly. That's right. But I was, I was notified via mail. I just wanted, that I am an adjacent property owner to the section that's being developed and or being proposed to develop, even though that back section isn't going to be developed at this time or may not ever be developed. My opposition really is a couple of things and want to get some clarification on a couple of items. One is the water, because you and I talked about this last week. And I think there's still some question as to whether or not Thomasville or V Lakes is gonna be the provider of the water over there. And that's a concern for me, because I'm at the very end of the line on Thomasville going up Old Lake Road. My neighbor, Richard Barnhill, is the last one on the line over there. And there's some concern about Thomasville's ability to even provide water there. So I want to have that question raised as a question. I don't know the answer to it.
I think, I think Scott's got the answer to it, but you go ahead and finish up.
Okay, great. And if V Lakes is gonna provide water, how's that gonna, I'd like to have that settled. My biggest concern really with it is erosion from the, if they're gonna develop that area, the water drains back into that pond there and it backs upon my property back in the back. It's some deer hunting land I have back there and some, my kids love going back there riding four-wheelers and their bikes and stuff and playing back there. It does get water right now, just in heavy rains. I don't know what kind of condition that land's gonna be. And if there's more water coming into the pond, I think some of my other neighbors have some concerns about more water coming into the pond because there's gonna be less, and I'm not an environmentalist. I don't know what the right terminology is for the rain soaking into the land and all that kind of stuff. But that's a concern that I have, is what, what is, if there is erosion down the road, you know, in two years because we have a property developed, who's gonna take care of the erosion on my land and who's gonna take care of the, you know, the drainage and all that kind of stuff that's coming into the pond? And if it causes more water to come into that pond than it can handle, there is a very nice culvert and the water does drain out quickly. It's a spring-fed pond. But when you get additional rainfall, it does back up in there and cause some issues. It doesn't flood any of the properties, just, it's not high enough to flood the homes and everything around there. But there is erosion, and I don't know what the erosion looks like on the other side of the pond, you know, going south of Old Lake Road. That's my second concern. The third concern I had was the way the road is laid out right there is some very, there's three blind curves on that road right there. And if you're gonna back up properties onto Old Lake Road, it's gonna create a very dangerous situation. I think it might. I would be, I would be in favor of this development from, without all the other two questions that I've, that I've raised, if the property was more like the Ironwood Estates, it's overall 468, where there's one entrance coming in and out of the property, and it was developed a little bit differently where there was one entrance coming in. I think that there, this needs to be looked at, where there's those three blind curves. I was gonna try to take some pictures of Brian, but I didn't have a chance to do it. You can barely see around those curves as it is now. And if there's 12 homes right on that, those curves right there, it's gonna be very dangerous for folks trying to come on Old Lake there.
Chris, on this, today, we're just doing the rezoning.
Right.
It's gonna be an engineered study. So he's got his engineering firm. We got the county engineer, and we're gonna take everything into account far as storm management, water, erosion. And, and I mean, he might adjust his driveways entering and exiting off of Old Lake Road. We don't know that yet. We hadn't looked at anything. Today is just only the rezoning part of it.
Right. Just, the question to me, it seems that we should be doing that first before we're considering.
Far as the water, I think Scott's gonna address that in just a few minutes when y'all get through.
Those are my, my biggest concerns.
Can y'all just hang out a few minutes?
Yeah, I'm, I'll wait. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Hey, good morning.
How you doing?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Dr. Kenneth Hardy. I own the property immediately adjacent to the property in question. In fact, the fence running down north-south is my, half my fence. So, and, and my colleague Bobby Dickers is here also. I'm glad he was able to make it because we each live on one or the other side of Campbell Lake, that pond, which Chris was discussing earlier, which is a natural runoff. Bobby stocks the lake. It's a wonderful area, free-flowing. And we had a lot of problems the last time work was done on that property adjacent to mine. They clear-cut several hundred acres, which pretty much destroyed our lake for several years because the runoff runs directly across my property. And it's dug about a three-foot hole that's about 100 foot long. So there's a huge water runoff from that immediate property that cuts right across my property and drains right into the pond. So our biggest concern is, is more of the same concern that Chris has already vocalized, and that is the ecological damage to a wonderfully productive and healthy lake that is really part of the community. And our kids fish in it and boat in it. And we, and equally important, I own eight acres with a two-story, a beautiful home and a pool and a very nice estate. So I'm not opposed to the idea of anything that's gonna improve the value of that land. But we do all have large properties, almost minimally eight to 10 acres. So having two-acre lots or 12 of them is, is going to really change the ecological feel of that area. And I would be much more excited if there were five-acre lots, for instance, in larger homes that kept the country flavor instead of a residential block right in the middle of a natural area where everyone's home is on rolling hills involving multiple acres. So I'm certainly not opposed to the idea. I'm very concerned that we could lose our lake in the process and restructuring of that drainage in that area. And I also share Chris's concerns about that blind curve. I almost lost a daughter to that blind curve coming out of my driveway. And I have a 700-foot long driveway. And when you get to the end of it, it's right there at that blind curve. Cars are coming from across the hill that you cannot see them till they're right on you. So that's gonna be a very dangerous area to put 12 houses and driveways. So that's gonna need to be addressed also. Finally, there's a zoning issue that I hope is resolved, and the zoning commission would know this certainly better than I do. But I ran into this issue after I purchased my eight acres in that my, my property was, what do you call it when they go in and mark off the?
Survey.
Survey. Thank you. Any old and senile here?
That's alright.
My property was surveyed in the back of my property, which is sort of the north-south section, was delineated on my paperwork by Mr. Hughes, who was our estate attorney at the time. And the western border, which is the fence of this property, the eastern border, which is the middle of the lake, Bobby owns the other side of the lake. We were living there several years. The people that lived behind us, who have 20, additional 12 acres, they basically sold the property. And the people that bought it came to us and said, well, why is your, why is your barn on our property? And I went, well, my barn's not on your property. My barn is on my property. And it turned into be a zoning problem that had to do with.
Surveying problem.
Surveying problem.
And not zoning.
Well, I'm not really sure whether it was a zoning or a survey problem because where our property was surveyed from the front of our property. But the zoning, according to the attorney, actually was in the middle of the street. So when they surveyed our property, they didn't survey it from the middle of the street. They surveyed it from the beginning of the ditch, which pushed it some 30-foot back. And suddenly, our property, we had, we had land that was not our property. They had a barn on it.
But that, I mean, that's to do with the survey and not, this, we're talking about zoning today. We're going from agricultural to RE1.
Okay. I just, I just wanna make sure that they knew about that so that they don't bring in all these houses and then found out after the fact that the survey was wrong again.
Right.
And then the whole thing's gotta go through. So, but if that's a zoning issue and you guys are on top of it, then that's fine. I believe that's, those are my only objections. And I think Bobby, would you like to?
The main thing is the lake.
Yeah. Bobby lives right on the other side of the lake. And so, and he maintains it, stocks it, feeds it, fishes it. He has, he has maintained it beautifully. And so we really want to keep that, this area pristine. The neighbors behind me cannot be here today and I can't really speak for them.
Sure.
But they do own 10 acres directly behind me. And they've clear-cut part of it. And it's a nice property and they love it. And they love the country ambience also. So maintaining that ambience and that, the healthy nature of it is really vital to us.
Alright. Thank, thank you.
How big is the lake?
Uh, what is it? About?
Six acres.
Six acres, huh? Right. And he owns the eastern half. I own the western half. And Chris is the northern, the northern section.
Alright, thank you for your comments.
Appreciate y'all. Let's go.
Anybody else to speak in opposition?
Yep. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good, how are you all?
How are y'all?
Good. How are you doing?
I'm a chap at the bat, and I live directly across from where the property is being purchased, and I have the same concerns they do. I just want to make that known.
Okay.
Mainly, like I said, coming in and changing the topography. I did talk to Scott, and he answered some of my questions, but I'm still worried that, like I said, it may not be right now, when they come in and clear, because he said something about knocking a hill down, and that would improve the blind spot for us, because my kids have almost, and me too, coming out of the driveway, just as it is now, you know, have almost been hit. People coming in and out really fast into Robin Hood, for sure, you know, but, because we complain enough about it. But the main thing, like I said, is the topography. And I have a pond across the street that does drain, and I'm worried that that's going to affect me. It goes into the lake behind me also, but that's going to mess up my property. And if it's down the line, two years down the line, I don't want to be stuck with a bill for something that happened across the street that's going to change, and then I have to come up with the money to pay for it. Same thing as Mr. Lowery said, we're all Thomasville Water. It's a very small company, so I'm concerned about that, too, the water. And he did say that they were going to put in septic systems, and so that would, that's good. I'm glad it's going to be that. But I just want to let it be known that I had the same, same concerns as he does. I would like to see larger lots, because I'm smaller than they are, but I do have four-and-a-half acres, and I would like to see if we, if it's possible to make them larger, just to keep that feel the way it is down in there.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Slade, anybody else?
Any others to speak in opposition on the matter?
Can I add one more thing, please?
Yes, sir.
Because I think the issue of the septic systems, and I failed to mention that, but that's another great concern, because there are septic tanks and septic systems. We happen to have a septic system, potable water comes out of it. But our neighbor has a septic tank, and it's a mess. And so depending on what sort of septic systems they're talking about putting in, real systems versus tanks that are going to be draining and smelling and going into our lake, et cetera, et cetera, that's also a real issue for us when we start having a residential, or changing to a residential zone. So that, that, I'm hoping will be-
And of course, I think the health department will be the one that decide on what type of system.
Okay. Just as long as it doesn't drain into my lake.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate you.
All right. Did you want to?
I think I'm going to let Scott speak.
Scott, do you have anything you want to address?
I would, if you don't mind.
Sir.
First, I thank you, board, for allowing us to bring this to you. And I'd like to quickly start by saying, it is exciting to me to see so many concerned neighbors, because we want to build in that area. We want to increase the value of their homes and the other neighbors in the area. We want to increase the, just the overall appearance of the neighborhood going in. So it's good to hear that people are concerned and have concerns, because that means they do care about their community, and that's good for us as builders. And we want to let you know that we're going to do everything we can to make sure that we make you guys happy and keep you happy. We want you happy. I don't want anybody upset with it when we're building houses. But to kind of address a couple of the things that was brought up, was one, the water department. We have met with the water department. They have issued a letter of intent, which means that they have looked at the property. They've made sure that they do have enough water flow and enough water pressure to sustain it and not interfere with your water services at all. We have, we have went and taken care of that so far. Water running into the pond, when they come in and clear-cut, they just go in and bulldoze. They run through there. They tear stuff up. No one really holds them accountable. When we come in and develop, we're only going to clear the front 200 feet to build the homes. So that's going to leave about 700 to 800 feet behind that undisturbed, and we will have to put up silt fence and barriers to make sure that nothing runs onto you that's on me. I can't do anything about what's happened in the past, but I can guarantee y'all, make sure that it's taken care of in the future. And if I don't do so, these folks will hold me accountable to make sure I do.
And the county requires from the, have some sod put down on the yard.
That's right. And I spoke with a young lady, she's back there, about her pond across the street. Her concern was maybe silt running through the culvert into her pond, and as y'all know, we have to put up measures to protect that. We can't be running mud in that ditch, and if we do, again, one of these guys will stop and put a stop work order sign in my yard and make me fix it. So I assure you, we will do our very best to make sure nothing runs on you that shouldn't be on you. The blind curve that you and I have discussed, actually, we are going to go in and take the front, start at the road and slope that lot back, which will actually increase the visibility in the future. Whether I buy the property or not, it's going to increase the, you know, the visibility if I purchase it and take care of it. So that will help in the future with anybody that's coming around that curve. It'll give them a little more visibility. Now, I'm not going to say it's going to be a perfect situation, but it will help greatly compared to the way it is now. Brad has already brought most of these concerns to me, and he's tried to make sure that we have our ducks in a row before we start work over there. The increased value to homes, your value on your home should go up $20 to $25 a square foot the day I start building. I believe that meant only. So I think, and at the worst-case scenario, you're going to gain money if you ever do decide to sell it. The septic systems will have to be approved by the septic department, excuse me, the health department, but they will be sprinkler systems, a full system. They will not allow us to run above-ground flow of septic, you know, like the old septic tank in the ground. They don't allow us to do that anymore, unless you have large acreage tracks. So that should not be a problem. I think, I touched on it real fast, everything that was brought up, but I do appreciate y'all coming. I do appreciate your concerns, and as I told the young lady in the back, anytime anybody has a concern, I have the phone. You can call me. I'll be glad to talk to you. I've talked to three or four of the neighbors last week, and the week before. I don't know that any of them came, but I think I alleviated some of their concerns anyway. But I do appreciate y'all letting me speak, and y'all taking a look at this.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What are your plans for the back 10 acres that are-
My agent, my agent has, he says a adjacent property owner wants to purchase that, so I sectioned it off. And that has, it has a right-of-way through my property, you know, so it's, it's actually considered a lot. But I don't know who it is. I don't handle all that. I let Derek Haverly take care of that. But that's what I was told. He said somebody wanted to buy that, and I said, "Hey, if I can do that to keep peace with the neighbor, let's do it." So.
If I can address that one issue, because it's a platted lot, it's defined as Lot 13, it's just Grace Estates, Old Lake Estates. It's Lot 13, Old Lake Estates. It can't be further subdivided. It'll be a 10-acre-plus parcel. It cannot be. It's a part of the development, so it'll be a 10-acre lot. That's what it'll be. The only way that it could possibly be subdivided is someone, I don't know who it would be, but all of the property owners, all 13 lot owners have to get together and agree to an amendment of the plat to allow that lot to be further subdivided. The likelihood that that would happen is slim and none. Most people would say, "I'm happy with that being a 10-acre lot behind me. I don't want five, two-acre lots behind me, so I want it to stay 10. I'm not signing that." So I think it's a, I think that's a helpful solution to the concern about how this property globally could ultimately be divided. Mr. May could take that back lot and divide it further. Of course, he's got to sink a lot of money into a county spec road to do that. But, so he's made a, you know, he's made a business decision. It's better, he's better served to let that stay one lot. So.
Also, my understanding right now, there's a gentleman named Mark, I don't know his last name, who owns the property on the other side of the lake, who is actually interested in purchasing that 10 acres, and he has an Indian heritage interest in expanding his own acreage, really to keep it a pristine land. So it would be very unlikely that would ever be subdivided by this.
I tend to agree. The cost to develop that property, since it doesn't have public road frontage, absent 100 acres, I mean, 100 feet, the likelihood that that would be further subdivided or developed would be slim. I don't see this as significant, as a significant change. Thanks, Scott. Gentlemen, you've now heard from those who are in opposition to the request. You've heard from the proponent, the applicant. Again, just quickly, your justification for considering rezoning has to do with the change in the character and the quality of the neighborhood, and a demonstrated public need for additional residential development. This board, I believe, I'm on safe grounds, saying this board is fully aware that there is not sufficient stock of acreage of this size for residential purposes in Rankin County. We see that development pressure all over the county, and so it's easy for the proposed developers to be able to establish a public need for additional residential acreage for development purposes. You've got a number of issues that have been raised, however, the issue, the primary issues that have been raised, which has to do with soil erosion, drainage conditions, the potential for issues affecting adjacent property owners, those are all matters that are subject to being analyzed and dealt with after the rezoning request. Mr. May does not want to spend the money that is required for all of the engineering that he's going to have to go through if, on the front end, the board's not willing to allow for the rezoning. So we do the rezoning first, and this is to address any issues that have been raised about, why are we not addressing all of this stuff? Well, there's a reason why. We have a process.
And y'all understand what he's saying. I mean, it costs a lot of money to have an engineer come in and draw all of this out. And, I mean, he wants to make sure he can get it rezoned before he does all of that, and then our engineer is going to look at it. So it's going to be looked at twice.
Rankin County, as a political subdivision, this board has nothing to do with public water supply. We've said that consistently, and so matters of what's going to be dealt, how is the water supply going to be dealt with, that is not a matter that this board has the ability or the legal authority to address. That is on the developer to get that straight with the provider of the water, which in this case is going to be a private water association. So that's beyond the purview or scope of what we're dealing with here. It'll have to be reflected on the development plans. Obviously, we want to know that public water is being supplied if you're going to put houses in place, so that'll be dealt with. The issue of drainage is something that we can attack at the point of time that we get ready to receive a plat, an actual plat. Mr. May will be required to provide an analysis from an engineer that demonstrates, here is what's happening with all storm water that is entering onto this property now. Here is what's going to happen with the storm water through a hydrological analysis after development activity occurs. And that engineer will have to determine through modeling how much water is coming on, how much water's going off, and Mr. May will have to conform his development so that the amount of water that's coming on today is equal to the amount of water that's coming on and leaving when the houses are in place. And so all of that is later to be determined and will be determined as a byproduct of our study of a drainage plan. The issue of sight lines and sight distances are something that we can address at the engineering stage, where there are concerns over speed of vehicles and ingress and egress and the potential for conflict there. We will look at that, and we will determine what is the best orientation of the drives to serve as access for those, and try to accommodate safety concerns as they arise. Having said all of that, now, for the purpose of the hearing, it would be appropriate for the board to consider and take action. We will close that public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request.
All right. So motion by Mr. Calhoun to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light signs. Item E passes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Slade.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm coming out.
Mr. Hicks, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We got to you.
All right.
Item number 11.
All right. Item A, under my section, is approval for the county to accept a three-year lease purchase financing agreement with Trustmark, and this is for the lease of a Kenworth dump truck for the road department.
Board, would you entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion first.
So motion approved by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light signs. Item A passes. Item B, Mr. Hicks.
All right. This is for the approval pay application number one. This is for a re-roofing project on the library building on Timberline, and it's for $112,955 in the authority to issue that check.
All right. Kind of a weak one over there, so. Motion to approve by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? How many, what's the total payout on that?
It's going to be around $185, I believe. They're done with the roof itself. We're waiting on metal to finish the outside flashing area.
I don't know if the building will worth that much.
It's close. All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light signs. Item B passes. Item C, Mr. Hicks.
This is our Department of Health renovation project. This will be eventually reimbursed from the state, and this is approval to pay the engineering firm $6,462.41 for his work so far.
So motion approved by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light signs. Item C passes. Item D, Mr. Hicks.
Authority to publish the detailed revenue and expense report for solid waste for the past fiscal year.
Motion approved.
Second.
So motion approved by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light signs. Item D passes. So item E.
Item E is a year-end issue. It's authority to publish the board supervisor's travel for fiscal year '21.
Motion approved.
So motion approved by Mr. Calhoun.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light signs. Item E passes. Item F, Mr. Hicks.
Item F relates back to when Mr. Guy was here, and he went through the insurance. This is potential action on awarding the county insurances with a renewal date starting November 1 for the county property, the auto insurance, the general liability, and the fire, volunteer fire services.
Make a motion approved.
So motion approved by Mr. Calhoun.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light signs. Item F passes. Item G, Mr. Hicks.
Item G is the authority to purchase two 2017 police vehicles and one 2018 police vehicles for the sheriff's office from the Missouri State Highway Patrol.
Motion approved.
So motion approved by Mr. Calhoun.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I was just going to say, that's also approving the travel to go pick them up.
Travel, too. You good, Brad?
Yeah.
Jake? So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light signs. Item G passes. Well done, Mr. Hicks.
I'm good.
Any additional business?
Do we have, I didn't look on our consent agenda, do we have Old Fair Road?
No, that, action on that would be taken.
The next meeting?
Yes.
Executive session, Mr. Slade?
I, I don't see it.
Good. No executive session today? So that's wonderful.
You sure y'all don't want to make something happen around here?
We make it. Hey, hey, now's our time.
We do. We can come to some common.
Yeah, yeah. At least two of us came out, too.
Whatever I've been talking about, I need, I need two empty chairs still before we do any of that, so let's just bypass that. I do want to report-
I wasn't talking about the executive session.
We're talking about additional business.
I do want to report to you guys that on Friday, we secured the waste management contract. We received a signed version of that from WME, and I think we're, either we turn it around or we're getting ready to turn it back around to them. That matter will be completely finalized, and you are under contract. I mention that because these days, waste management actually having a contract in hand-
Secured is a little different for them. So I wanted to mention that I'm grateful that we were able to arrive at a satisfactory conclusion of all of that and get all that inked up, and our people's solid waste collection activities are going to continue to move forward uninhibited, seamless.
For the next six years.
Yes.
The meeting did no fracture with two people there.
Hey, we can go. Hey, we can go. All right. Motion to recess to the 15th of October.
Make it.
So, and finally, we get a motion by Mr. Calhoun, and a motion by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light signs. So we recess to the 15th.
Man, that's all right. Almost quick with Brad.
What are we talking about?
Last time.
Hey, gotta make it happen.